Good evening and welcome everybody to the Gilbert City Council Regular City Council Meeting of Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. We are live streaming tonight due to the national emergency with the coronavirus and working under the governor's state emergency protocol. Can I have the city clerk take a determination of quorum here, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Robich.
Here.
Counselor Leoni.
Here.
Counselor Skanzic.
Here.
Mayor Oberstarr.
Here.
Counselor Pulis. Counselor Pulis.
Joe, are you here?
I'm here.
Counselor Pulis is joining us by phone.
I'm here.
Let the record show, city attorney Brian Lindsey, clerk Jim Paulson, and city engineer John Jamnik are in attendance.
Thank you. We have determined a quorum for tonight's meeting. Would you all rise and help me open with a pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Do we have any, no additions to tonight's agenda, clerk? No?
No, just supporting business.
All right. All right. I think I have to put my glasses on tonight.
And Mayor, your declaration.
I'll take it under my business.
Sounds good, thank you.
Approved city council minutes of prior to this tonight's meeting, March 10th, 2020, city council working session. I reviewed, made some adjustments. It's all okay for the council to look at.
Want her motion to approve?
Moved by Counselor Robich, supported by...
I'll support.
I'll second.
I'm gonna ask, because of this, I'm gonna ask our city attorney if this is okay. The second here over the phone.
Mayor, at this point, based on the current circumstances, based on the fact that we've made some arrangements, there is a provision contained within Minnesota statute 13D.021 that would allow participation by telephone, provided certain circumstances are met. I think we're in compliance with the requirements of that provision. The only caveat is that any votes taken, because we have an appearance by phone, must be taken by roll call so that each individual vote can be identified.
Well, thank you. Even with that said, we have five of us here. Joe, could I ask you to, I want you to participate in here, but if you really, really had to come down to needing to vote or second on something, or change an outcome or something, then I would ask you to say yes or no, or second, or what, or emotion.
Okay.
If you really needed to, but since we have five here and you're not in disagreement with anything, maybe we could forget about that, just so nobody could challenge later on.
Yeah, that's...
Then we'd have to go through this process of fighting, probably win it, but I don't see the need really to go...
That, that, that works for me.
Does it work? Okay, thank you, Joe. So could somebody else second that then?
I'll second it.
All right. Moved by Counselor Robich, supported by Counselor Leoni to approve the March 10th, 2020, city council working session. All, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post in a. Motion carries. Again, March 10th, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I did notice one change earlier today. The Tuesday, March 10th minutes for the city council meeting on page three, old business A, subsection one, bullet point three, 94% completed November 25th, 2020, needs to be corrected to 94% completed November 25th, 2019.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. Everybody see that correction? Other than that, everybody okay with the correction? And the rest of the minutes? Somebody want to move then with the correction?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Skanzic, supported by Counselor Leoni with the correction to change November 25th, 2020 to November 25th, 2019 on page three. Dealing with the 94% completion on the wastewater treatment plant certificate. Any more discussion? Corrections, deletions, or additions? Somebody? Counselor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post in a. Motion carries. Jeremy, you want to shut this off? We might...
It is on.
Off.
Oh.
Until you, until you need it. I know it's up here, it's automatically, it's automatically on up here, but then I don't know how it ever fixed the... It's better now over there.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Robich.
Just if we can go back to the past two votes, per the attorney's advice, it was recommended that we do roll call for all votes, so just to be in accordance with that recommendation.
Because of the, it's here? Yes.
That's correct, Mayor. There's the, in that, in the provision that allows appearance by telephone, the couple requirements are that everybody be able to hear and participate in the discussion with the speakerphone and the PA system, we've got that covered. The other requirement is that we're going to want to take all of our votes by roll call.
In the old days, because of circumstance, we couldn't even do this, so here we are. Anyway. Okay. I'm gonna move back, I'll step a few steps back and we'll do the March 10th, 2020, all over again, vote. And we had the motion by Counselor Robich, supported by Counselor Leoni, to approve that working session minutes. I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Leoni. Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Skanzic.
Aye.
Mayor Oberstarr, aye. Counselor Robich.
Aye.
Counselor Pulis.
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Now we'll go with the March 10th, 2020, regular city council minutes. Take a roll call vote. We had a motion by Counselor Skanzic, supported by Counselor Leoni, to approve them. Roll call vote, Counselor Skanzic.
Aye.
Counselor Leoni.
Aye.
Counselor Pulis.
Aye.
Counselor Robich.
Aye.
Mayor Oberstarr, aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Upon the recommendation of the city clerk that due to the circumstances before us with one of our counselors on his conference phone, all votes will be roll called. All right. Any, what happens to the public input? A public is gone? They left the building?
Three members of the public are in the meeting room, which we've set up with the live stream.
If any of those people, based on a governor's mandate, no gathering of more than 10, we got some room in here now. How much more we got room here? Two more? We can have two more come in here if they want, if they have some public input. They're in a room across the hall. Here's the time, I guess we got room for two more occupants in this room to be compliance with that no more gathering of 10. Can we pick? We're gonna go take a check on that. You're good, everybody's good, all right. So then all come to reports by the mayor and council. Counselor Robich.
No formal report.
Counselor Skanzic.
I have nothing to report right now.
Counselor Leoni.
I have nothing at this time.
Counselor Pulis.
Just everyone stay safe and enjoy their time with their family.
Thank you. Okay. I have two items. Well, I'm gonna have the council, before I read this resolution and act upon it, give me a poll. Okay. Everybody's aware of the national emergency of the coronavirus nationwide. We have Governor Walz's state of Minnesota emergency. And as of, it was March 13th. I came to the conclusion that, on a couple things, Jim has here memo or a report that we put on the doors and up on a billboard out here, consultation with me, actually that's not the right verbiage. I declared a city emergency on three different days, on three different categories. March 13th, a state emergency to close down the public library. On March 17th, closed down the community center totally. This was my city emergency declaration. I didn't go before camera or anything like that, but that was my instructions to the staff in the form of a city emergency, not consultation, although we had to talk to get those instructions out. And last Friday was March 20th, a state of emergency to close down City Hall. Also, to have the Public Works Department take all precautions, the Police Department take all precautions, and the Fire Department take all precautions to protect them and the citizens of Gilbert. These were all in attempt to protect employees and citizens of Gilbert. And it worked well, so far, so good. Here we are tonight, and I'm asking the council to okay this, my other resolution or declaration to continue all these to, to be looked at again on April 14th, 2020, in a, in the form of a written declaration of emergency. So before I read this out loud, is everybody okay? Did you all read this and okay with the language in there?
Mr. Chair. I've read it, and I guess my questions would be expressly, what powers are you looking to enact by declaring a city emergency that we don't already have under the state and county emergency declarations? And I have spoken with Mayor Skelko over in Mountain Iron, as I know they just recently passed one. I fail to see where this is a necessary step for the current state of events. So I would just like to understand a little more what the purpose of this resolution is.
Governor did not close down any city buildings in Gilbert.
Well, according to the League of Minnesota Cities, and I did some extensive research on local declarations of emergency today, according to the League of Minnesota Cities, we do have some capabilities to shut down local buildings based on the Minnesota Department of Health recommendations that have been laid out through the state emergency.
Yeah, I have that authority, and I have done it the last 10 days. We are here now acting as a council of a whole to continue it.
I understand that you've already taken those steps. But again, I don't see where taking council action is necessary to take additional steps.
There are no additional steps, it's just to expand what has been done till next meeting, April 14th. Keep what I've just laid out as declaration, City Hall, Library, Community Center, and all the other precautions, and having council meetings with no more than 10 at the meeting, and a separation. I mean, expand, continue that, that's all this is about legally and writing. I can no longer continue on with that. I have to ask the council to continue on.
Right. I understand that your powers only extend for three days, so I get...
Three days, unless it's, if it's...
By the council, yes.
If it's not dealt with, then we need to have a meeting, but it was dealt with and it was okay, there was no other problem. So there was no need to have a meeting on the fourth day. We are probably now at the 10th or 12th day. Things are good, there's no reason to have the meeting. Tonight's the reason to have the meeting, to continue by law, and that's why I'm asking to continue this declaration of emergency, city emergency as a council of a whole.
So Attorney Lindsey, just to clarify my understanding, is this necessary to continue those closures? Because again, as I understand it, we have the authority to continue those closures under the existing declarations without entering into this.
Thank you, Counselor and Mayor. The, the effect that this resolution would have is it would allow the city to access certain other portions of our disaster management or emergency management plan. The, the closures that were put in place would remain in effect until the, until the state of emergency has concluded, but this would allow the city some additional authorities to deal with circumstances or situations that may arise in the meantime, where we may not be able to get back necessarily and have a meeting, or where we may need to access some resources through the emergency management plan that we put in place, I believe, back in 2018.
Thank you.
I could tomorrow act on another emergency and say the water plant blew up. I could act on another emergency to all hands on deck, contractors be called to come and help to whatever needs to be stopped over there, and spend all kinds of money up until the third day, unless that situation is not dealt with, then we have another meeting. So one emergency at a time. This is all dealing with the coronavirus to keep all the governor, governors' policies, protocol, and to keep people safe. So this is one emergency, I could have a bunch of them every day. I hope not. So this is to deal with this officially and legally, after they've been dealt with already, by my instructions to the staff. And that was in, under the basis of an emergency. Not that I just automatically say, shut this down. It's under the quotation, emergency, city emergency. And now we are legally, I need to know, because it's down here, it says, might be further resolved. Is the council okay with this before I read it, and we're gonna take a vote on it? Or what, what's the situation? We need to amend some of this? Everybody okay with staying as a, as a declaration of, those three basically were shut down? And it's on a billboard outside and it's been reported in the paper by, Linda Tyson called me and I explained to her the situation, and I'm sure everybody read it. So it's been, public's been notified, general public's been notified in many different ways. Everybody okay with this?
Yep.
Jeremy?
I'm fine with it.
Counselor Pulis?
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna read this. Resolution 2020, what's another, four, 2024. Resolution declaring local emergency pursuant to Minnesota statute number 12.29 subdivision one, whereas the Center for Disease Control has identified the potential public health threat, commonly known as COVID-19, is a new strain of coronavirus, and whereas this virus has not been previously identified in humans and can easily spread from person to person. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, the governor issued effective order 20-01, declaring a peacetime emergency and coordinating Minnesota's strategy to protect Minnesotans from COVID-19. And whereas Carl Oberstarr Jr., Mayor of the City of Gilbert, finds that under the authority provided by chapter 12 and related laws of the state of Minnesota, the following situation exists, peacetime emergency due to the COVID-19 health pandemic, and whereas the mayor finds that the situation presents a combination of circumstances that are sudden and could not have been anticipated, and whereas the mayor finds that conditions in the city of Gilbert, Minnesota have worsened considerably as a result of the evolving situation, and whereas the mayor finds that this situation threatens the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the community, and threatens the continuation and efficiency, efficient delivery of the city services, and whereas the mayor finds that the situation poses a risk or may cause extensive personal injury, damage, or disaster to the city if not immediately addressed, and whereas the mayor finds that this, that traditionally sources of relief are not able to repair or prevent the injury or loss. Now there, now therefore be resolved that the mayor declares this situation to be a local emergency affected as of March, council meeting of, March 24th, 2020, regular council meeting of March 24th, 2020. Or do I go back to the March 13th on that?
This is a separate declaration I would start.
Okay. I understand, yeah. It is therefore, it is further resolved that pursuant to Minnesota statute 12.29 subdivision one, that the Gilbert City Council ratifies and extends the declaration for the reasons herein contained to be reevaluated, reevaluated at its regular meeting of April 14th, 2020, unless earlier canceled by subsequent actions. This declaration of local emergency will invoke the city's disaster plan and authorize other appropriate community containment and mitigation strategies. The portions that are necessary for response to and recovery from the emergency are hereby authorized to the extent that normal state laws and city policies and procedures impede an efficient response or compliance with federal and state directives or recommendations. The city administrator, emergency manager director, and designees are hereby authorized to suspend compliance with those laws, policies and procedures as authorized by the governor's declaration and Minnesota statute 12.32, and to take those actions deemed necessary to protect the public health and safety adopted by the city council of City Gilbert this 24th day of March 2020. Signed, Mayor Carl Oberstarr Jr. So therefore, somebody want to make a motion to approve this declaration?
I'll motion.
Motion by Counselor Leoni. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Skanzic to approve this resolution 2020-4. Any more discussion? Roll call, Counselor Pulis? Counselor Pulis? Joe? Joe?
I don't have that reading on my packet, I have some sexual assault awareness month thing.
That's why I read it. So did you hear it?
I, I heard it, yes.
Okay. So roll call vote, how do you vote? Yes or no?
No, because I don't understand it, so...
No? Okay. Counselor Robich?
No.
Counselor Skanzic?
Aye.
Counselor Leoni, you already went?
Uh, aye again.
Mayor Oberstarr, aye. Motion carries three to two to continue the declaration of emergency. Oh my God. Counselors Skanzic, Leoni, Mayor Oberstarr voting yes, voting no, Counselor Pulis, Counselor Robich. Oh my God. I don't think I'm gonna run again. I'm sick and tired of all this stuff. All right. Can't even agree on an emergency of, emergency declaration. Oh my God. I know, I'm on TV. I'll be, enough of this stuff going on. Never changes. I've been here 14 years now, never changes. It's always, it's crazy. All right. My next thing is we have the sexual assault proclamation I need to address, and boy, I bet you I get that voted down too or something. I'm close to voting it down. Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm not even old, I'm just gonna read it and you can vote on it later. It's an annual thing that's been going on in Gilbert for years, and many other communities are very important project, is the St. Louis County Sexual Assault and Awareness Program. And they always picked, I think is, April, yeah, April, as their month. And the mayor reads the proclamation, it's my proclamation, probably get voted down. 2020 Sexual Assault Awareness Month, mayor proclamation, whereas the Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to bring awareness to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and is a public health concern for individuals and families, community members, and communities as a whole. Whereas child sexual abuse, exploitation, rape, and sexual harassment impact all communities as seen by the national statistics, one in three girls and one in six boys will be sexually violated by the age of 18. One in five children is solicited sexually while on the internet. One third of all sexual violence cases in northern St. Louis County happen to children 17 years and younger. Whereas in physical 2019, our local sexual assault program of north, northern St. Louis County has worked with 450 primary and secondary crime victims of sexual, sexual violence whom reside in our communities. The program has provided more than 15,550 documented trauma and victim-focused advocacy services with these crime victims. Whereas annually, more than 4,239 community members ages preschool through college and age and area professionals are provided awareness and prevention education through the program. Whereas staff, board members, and volunteers of our local anti-sexual violence programs, the sexual assault program in northern St. Louis County encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and to help survivors connect with community allies. Whereas we must work together to educate and to engage communities in sexual violence awareness and prevention, and to believe, listen, and learn, and support as victims and family members. Whereas a growing number of Minnesota leaders are committed to sexual violence prevention, and whereas all Minnesotans must part... And whereas all Minnesotans must part of the solution to eliminate, must be part of the solution to eliminate crimes of sexual violence. Therefore, I, the mayor of City of Gilbert, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April in the year twenty twenty as a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. In testimony of I inter sent my hand and caused to be affixed the great seal of the city of Gilbert located in St. Louis County in the state of Minnesota. Apparently, I might not need a council vote on that. So, but if the council wishes to support that proclamation, I can entertain a motion to support the mayor's proclamation by the council.
I'll support.
Move by Counsel Leoni to support the mayor's proclamation.
I'd second that.
Second by Counsel Skenzich. Any more discussion? Counsel Pulis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Robic?
Aye.
Counsel Leoni?
Aye.
Counsel Skenzich?
Aye.
Mayor Oberster, aye. Motion carries five to zero. I'll call everybody on the council voting affirmative. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Before we move on, if people are watching, you can see that we have no more than ten people in the room here tonight at the gathering. We have others across the hall. We are under a peacetime emergency, citywide, nationwide, statewide. I encourage everybody to keep the distance. Safe distance of six feet is recommended. Governor has closed the bars and restaurants. All school, sporting events. I've never seen anything like this in my lifetime. And you watch the news, there's a lot of bad, uh, negative, not negative, but I'm just saying it's, it's serious business. This virus is deadly. And I, will it, uh, it'll always, I think it'll always be with us, one form or another. Some it'll affect differently, but we're all gonna be carriers of some kind at some point in some year, just like other flus. And, uh, this is a huge wave right now and it, uh, CDC has recommended to all the, our big leaders of the whole nation to take this, these steps to slow down this virus. And hopefully the citizens of Gilbert heed all those recommendations by City of Gilbert here, the governor, the president, and CDC. And we'll get through it. When? I don't know. Apparently, we might be looking through the month of April again. What I've been hearing. I don't know, but, uh, it is what it is and we got, we'll get through it one day at a time. And hopefully everybody in Gilbert, uh, takes it seriously and stays safe and, and be, uh, respectful to everybody else, even though maybe you're at low risk, others at high risk. We all have to work together to stop this. Not stop it, but slow it down. And I thank you for doing your part. Okay, we'll go on. Reports of staff and board commissions. I thought I saw Sam here today. Is he not here? He left?
He's not here, mayor. He gave me a couple of items he'd like me to do.
All right. All right, city attorney Brian Lizzie, you got anything, sir?
Mayor, I've got, uh, two items that, uh, that fall under my report. Uh, the first is a, uh, item number one under me is a, the wire cable replacement. Uh, this, uh, I believe deals with the, um, request of the council for me to come back and take a closer look at that uh, American steel requirement for the cables of the wastewater treatment plant. I have taken a look at that. I put together a, a brief memorandum that I've, uh, shared a copy with Mr. Paulson, uh, which is briefly to summarize, uh, the way that I've looked at this. Uh, I think a couple of things become pretty clear as we start to take a closer look. Uh, number one, uh, that requirement, uh, was in our original bidding documents. It was a very clear requirement that, uh, that the steel used in the project be American steel. And, uh, it was clear that, um, when originally bid, Stan Tech agreed that they would comply with all of the uh, specifications that were contained within that, uh, with that bid package. As I look through, uh, the way we're looking at this now is whether or not the, uh, the change from the foreign steel cable to the American made steel cable, uh, complies with the, uh, what's essentially a de minimis waiver. I looked at that de minimis waiver and, uh, while the de minimis waiver exists, I don't believe that, uh, something in the nature of these cables fits within the spirit of what that waiver is intended for. Uh, and as you look more closely at that, uh, de minimis waiver, the requirements of it, it talks about things that are, are small, uh, low, low cost ticket items, uh, that may be difficult to determine the, the country of origin. And when they talk about it, they talk typically about nuts, bolts, washers, things of that nature. And then a lot of the conversation that surrounds the de minimis, uh, waiver talks about things that they don't consider to be, uh, de minimis. Those would be things such as tees, elbows, flanges, brackets. And I think what we're dealing with here with steel cable, uh, is more along the line of the, uh, elbows, flanges and brackets than it is along the lines of nuts and bolts. Uh, and so, uh, while there could be arguments both ways on this, on this point, I think that, uh, being true to the spirit of what the de minimis waiver was intended for, uh, I don't believe that these steel cables fall into that de minimis exception. And so I, I would, um, uh, offer the, the memo and we can make, uh, copies of it available for everybody to read the more thorough, uh, report or opinion that I'd issued, but that's kind of a summary. Uh, the second item that I've got, uh, underneath myself for the report, uh, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the, uh, I N I, uh, inspection forms and the independent contractor documents. Uh, all of the requests that have been made, uh, by the council for changes or updates, those two documents have been made. And just this afternoon, I did forward copies of the, the updated and amended documents to Mr. Paulson, and that's my report, man.
All right, I'll go back to your first, uh, import, report about the wire cable. If I'm hearing correctly, we didn't have to do nothing.
Uh, mayor, I think that's, I mean, that's, that's a position we can take. I think what we should do is we should talk with Stan Tech more clearly, explain the rationale behind, uh, behind this opinion. And we can have some conversations with them, uh, about potential resolutions. But I think from a legal standpoint, I think this, the city is well within its right to, uh, to ask that the specification that was originally contained within the bid package be honored.
And that job was in the bit, obviously, obviously in the project needed to be done and it was bid that way. Nothing new that had to be, has to be done, so it's not a change order. And everything is, it's in there, so that twenty eight thousand dollars should have been in that bid. So I don't, what I see, what I hear, nothing needs to be further done, other than we can still communicate and probably for some reason or other, talk with them, but unless they balk at our rationale. But I'm hearing that nothing needs to be done.
First, mayor, my understanding is that, uh, ScanTech has reached out to the state to see if the state has an interpretation and I guess we await the return of that opinion.
Okay, counselors, have anybody, Joe, anybody else, anything want to, uh, speak about on this issue?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you, Joe. I think we can just move on on that and wait or whatever. Anybody okay with that?
Yes.
Nothing formal, I think action wise, it needs to be done. It hasn't been done about two or three years ago now, I guess. I N I can contract agreement. I think we talked about that a little bit earlier on in our other meetings this, this evening. Uh, and everything's in order there, uh, just ready for, uh, hiring of somebody and then proceeding on, which are all up in air right now. But if everybody's okay with the wording on this contract, uh, to be in place and then all we need to do is later is, uh, enter name. At a future date, but I guess maybe, I said, we need to formalize this contract to be used with, uh, in, in future hiring of a I N I inspector. Yeah, I think we should do that tonight. We're okay. And just plug in the name some other time. Or do it all at the same time.
Mayor, just, uh, just for the council's information, uh, the contract, the form contract that we prepared related to the independent contractors for the I N I inspections, uh, those contracts do take into account all the information that we've received from the League of Minnesota Cities relative to independent contractor agreements.
Maybe we can do it all at one time when we hire somebody and okay this contract then to them.
Mayor, I think that would be appropriate. This gives the council an opportunity to see the documents that are, that are being used. And I think the final step will be to, to, uh, finalize them by inserting the names and bring them back to the council for approval of the specific contracts that would allow those folks to go out and start inspections.
Jim, you got, you're okay with that?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, now that we have the agreement in place, uh, we can do the advertising. So when they ask for a copy of what they're bidding on or submitting for, we have it for them. That was our only delay. So we'll get that add in the paper and see if we can get some candidates.
Oh, okay. Okay, council's okay to, uh, you've been, uh, presented this by our attorney to review formally at a council meeting. And we'll take it back up when we decide to implement the inspection, hiring of somebody, uh, at a future date in the near future, hopefully. Anything else for Brian by the council? Any questions to ask of him before we move on? You're gonna have something else down at the bottom here, maybe? The antenna thing, uh, all right. All right, city engineer John Jamnik?
Uh, the only items I have are on, uh, remaining on the agenda, so.
Okay, any questions by the council for Mr. Jamnik, our city engineer? Chief Paulson, uh, teacher is not here. Public Works Director Sam Lotiger is not here. Library Director Sue DeBos is not here. Executive, and that's all because of the ten, ten, uh, in this room, occupancy of ten. I could make room for somebody. I could leave. Jim?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I'd like to share this that I got from Library Director Sue DeBos. Uh, the only thing from the Gilbert Library is the staff is in the building but cannot do requests or checkouts and do not know when we will be back. We will be cleaning every inch and will be going room to room to do so. For any patron wishing to read or listen to an ebook or audiobook, they should go to the Arrowhead Library System and Library App and check out materials, books, audio and magazines. That's what Sue wanted me to share. Uh, Sam Lotiger?
Before we move on, should be cleared up and at the meeting here too, when we said city hall, uh, hall is, um, closed after the meeting, only for council meetings like this with the ten. Senior citizens is closed too. There'll be no activities there, no entrance into the building. That needs to be pointed out too, that's included in that.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, from Sam. He wanted to ask the council if it's okay for us to advertise for two summer employees at ten dollars an hour. That's what we had paid last year. And second item for consideration is alley pickup. If everything stays the same, we know things are changing on a daily basis, it seems. Uh, he would like to schedule alley pickup, April twenty seventh through May first, two thousand twenty. Branches no longer than four feet and all leaves in bags, all leaves and grass clippings in bags.
What is the date you said? April what, fourteenth?
April twenty seventh through May first.
We need, we need council action on that. To advertise and, uh, everybody okay with that? Somebody want to move?
I'll move.
Move by Counsel Skenzich, supported by?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Leoni to, uh, have alley cleanup with the details in the advertisement and what's allowed and not, what's not allowed to begin April twenty seventh to May first. Any further discussion? Again, roll call vote. Counsel Pulis?
Aye.
Counsel Robic?
Aye.
Counsel Leoni?
Aye.
Counsel Skenzich?
Aye.
Mayor Oberster, aye. Motion carries all five council, uh, council people voting affirmative, aye. Next, you had the part-time people. You want to start adding for, uh, advertising for that?
Correct. For two, uh, the request is for two summer employees at ten dollars an hour.
Public Works Director is asking us to okay that, to start, uh, advertising for two summer employees. What's the council wish to do?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Robic?
Um, I think this request, um, actually, I think the majority of what's on the agenda should be tabled in lieu of the pandemic and we should be addressing emergent issues. So I'm not in support of moving to bring people in to interview and potentially bringing on additional staff when we should really be encouraging our employees to stay out of contact with other people.
This, uh, person, uh, the hiring don't start till June anyway. What do you want to advertise now, right?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, we hired in May last year.
And who, who's interviewing the applicants?
That was, uh, Public Works Director and myself.
Okay, so you only got one, two, three people maybe at a time interviewing. Two and one and a person in front of you.
Correct.
So I don't see why we can't do it unless you want to table it. It's up to the council. Counselor?
I guess I'd be in support of tabling it for right now, just until we see what's gonna happen before our next meeting. I mean, a lot of things could happen. It may not even be worth going out for summer help this year, depending how this goes.
Okay, do we want a, in a formal, formal vote of tabling so it can be brought back or you just want a consensus from the council? It's up to the council. Formally, it's, it comes back under all business.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Robic?
I prefer not to do it formally as it wasn't on the agenda originally. That's just my preference.
Well, technically it was. It would have been brought up there under Director's, uh, input, which was relayed by him. It's formally under, even like when it comes to the council, if you had counselor, you had something, if you had something. But again, with the formal, it comes back under all business at some point. But, again, with the formal, it comes back under old business at some point. It's supposed to be the next meeting, but, and that can be extended, but I'm okay, I'm formal or unofficial, we can hold off on this for another time. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Go, Councilor Pulis?
Yep, I'm okay with table.
We'll leave it as a poll over the consensus of council to take it up another meeting, could be three, four meetings down the road. Alright, any else, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're just, we're working diligently with the COVID-19 situation that we have here. Keeping all the city services going, I would like to say if, you know, something like garbage bags, you know, if you need them and you can't get over to Holiday, please call City Hall. We'll do our best to get some over to the citizens. We'll do, we're doing our best with what we have to work with. So I thank the citizens for their understanding and the directions we have to take.
Thank you. And I think, I wanna thank you and the staff and Public Works and TNI and the whole, everybody, all the employees and staff have been doing a fine job the last almost two weeks now since the emergencies have come out, so. Thank you for all.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll certainly pass that off to the staff.
Cemetery Advisory Board minutes from March 3rd, 2020. And we have recommendations for the council to review, to act on or not act on at the present time, but take the minutes first.
I'll enter motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Councilor Robich, supported by
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Skansic. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say nay? Oh, roll call. Excuse me. Roll call vote, Councilor Skansic?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oberstarr, aye. Councilor Pulis?
Aye.
Councilor Robich?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have some recommendations, actually two. One is adjusting the rates up there on different things, like uncovering.
Mayor?
Yes.
The Cemetery Board did notify us that they wanted, they didn't want those rate recommendations going forward at the time, they wanted to revisit them. So we only have the one recommendation today.
Only one recommendation to have the hall road for bringing any, I don't even know if we're gonna have a city Gilbert project on the main street for us to dictate to the contractor what to do with the fill. Anyway, but they are recommending to go up Nebraska Avenue to help with the cemetery expansion that we need to fill up for ditching and future burials up there to obtain the main street project overburden to assist with that, not to, because we desperately need overburden to help that project go. And they're recommending to the council to as a route to have the trucks from the contractor on the main street go up Nebraska Avenue through Hopkins Park. And there's an old road that I know I used to follow as a young boy. I haven't been up there since that time. I don't know if the road is still there or not. Yeah, oh, another four blocks down to the gas plant and into the twenty, additional 20 acres of our cemetery.
Well, the road is still there, but there's overgrowth. You have to trim those trees.
Yeah, and are you gonna have a trucks going up there? You got, I think Nebraska Avenue has at least twenty, ten homes on each side. And then you gotta fix that road up there versus going, I think we talked about last time, going up Alaska, you have the Anthem and you have two other residents, and you go on Summit, you got one more resident, three residents. And then you have this road that's on the map plotted but not put in. And then that brings you right up to the old cemetery road and right into the cemetery expansion. I can understand why that is not acceptable versus that Nebraska one. Well, I would recommend the council relook at that and John doesn't have a, John, you know, engineer, you have a breakdown of the cost between the doing that one block of road versus No. Well, I think as you look at the cost of putting that road in, in between on Summit Street over there, Alaska addition, extension of Alaska Avenue versus going into Hopkins Park and going down this road that has grown over for many years, and the size of the trucks that'll be going up that Nebraska Avenue, which we have on our, one of our plans to fix before or after fixing, because and then come back to the council. If we can look at it in monetary ways, I don't, I hope everybody reconsider's that. Well, I want this cemetery expansion bad, but I respectfully disagree with that road recommendation. And that's as simple as said for me. I'd like to have Alaska Avenue continuation that is plotted on the map, has been there as an easement for the gas line company up there, and it brings us to our goal quicker, less troublesome to neighbor, people that live. And it will be blacktopped. So that's my point, and council can share your points of view, but look at it again, look at it at a monetary standpoint, look at it as ineffective or effective or disturbance to more people than between the two. We'll revisit this the next council meeting, unless you wanna talk about it now.
Mayor, from we have no way of knowing if this is gonna be one dump truck or 500 dump trucks, do we?
No. Well, good point. And a big dump truck, bigger than our city trucks, I'm sure. Again, the only road that I see cheapest way. The expansion of Alaska Avenue, that one half a block area, the monies council could use for that is the sale of the storage buildings up there. We still have, after we do Summit Street from Holiday up to that area, which we should start pretty soon, right, right? Maybe, if you're allowed to do it, I guess. There's some under that $78,000, there's a big chunk of about $50,000 worth of work to do on Summit Street. And that might leave an additional $20,000 which we could use to do this expansion of Alaska Avenue. Versus go ahead and make that road up there big enough for trucks to go up and down in both ways. I don't, that's I don't see the, how that benefits money-wise. So what are you saying, Councilor Skansic? Revisit it again?
Yeah, I would think so. I guess my only other thought is if we had somewhere closer that they could dump and in the future, as we're moving forward, have loads hauled up there. You just don't know the frequency and how many is actually gonna get out of this.
Well, we gotta do something with that area, you know, so we wanna bring it up there, not handle it twice. The contractors bringing it up there for us for nothing, because we're doing them a favor versus, you know. So we should look into getting it done somehow. We can't go through the cemetery, the bottom road of the cemetery, you have to go through a wall on the, I think the north end or west end to punch another road on that lower road to that area. That's an option too. But you're gonna have other equipment going through the bottom road, at least the bottom road of the cemetery. But this has to be agree, something has to be finalized before construction starts so we can get their cemetery expansion started and not waste that overburden. Councilor Leonie?
Where Gillespie's used to be, where we're throwing our snow while laying up that area. What's wrong with that to have a storage area, you could put a lot of dirt there. It's gonna be a little eyesore, but it's a perfect spot for dumping the dirt. We have enough room there for many loads.
It's a good point too, yes we do, but I think on economic development, we have potential buyer for that.
Viable?
Viable buyer, yeah, so. There's nothing to officially speak of right now, but hopefully it'll materialize. We'll just take up, take this up another time, that's recommendation, right? Okay? I'll tell you, I'm voting for expansion of Alaska Avenue. Alright. Evlithale Gilbert School District Joint Recreation Board meeting. And I appreciate all the work, all the boards are doing. Well, we don't have to agree on everything, but we agree on most things. That's good. And that's what advisory boards are doing, doing the legwork, and that's great. That's a lot of legwork, a lot of thought, a lot of and I put a lot of thought in it too, but that's how I need to vote. Council can vote accordingly. Evlithale Gilbert School District Joint Recreation Board meeting for March, for March 11th, 2020 minutes. We need to okay the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Robich, supported by
I'll support.
Councilor Leonie? Any more discussion? Councilor Pulis?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Councilor Robich?
Aye.
Mayor Oberstarr, aye. Councilor Skansic?
Aye.
Motion carries. Everybody voting aye. Wastewater, old business. Wastewater Treatment Plan update. We have Mr. Standak, or nobody here, administrator?
Uh, no, no one here and no update.
Okay, no update. Minnesota Highway 37 update. Administrator, we got anything else to add other than what we talked about earlier?
I know we're gonna set that for the April 14th agenda.
April 14th agenda, and April 14th might be the same situation here. As far as spread apart, everybody's only 10 in this big room here. At least we're having a meeting and conducting city business. It's not our fault we're not table everything. Project scope. Okay, AT&amp;T, a tenant contract. Everybody's had in a packet, the newer. When is actually the whole contract up? I'm confused of what the language was. Is that up shortly? Or up in 2022?
Yeah, Mayor, the current, the current contract we're under with them expires on July 31st, 2022.
And we're already talking about expanding that into 2027?
Well, the whole thing came up, if council remembers. AT&amp;T sent us a new amendment that they wanted. The big thing on that was they wanted to drop the rent, the monthly rent they were paying.
Well, you wanna start that before 2022?
Correct.
Very good. I can understand the economics and if we can help in the situation, but as far as Amendment Three, I have some concerns. And hopefully our city jury can clear them up. As far as cities as though are we waiving anything like the right of, they have the right to put five additional ones in there, no limit on how many they can have up there, and if we need to take them to the side for our maintenance, it's gonna be our responsibility, not theirs. And that'll be additional cost to us. I don't know if we can do that or not, excuse me. We're talking a lot tonight. And what do you, what's your take on Amendment Three? Is it a deal breaker or not?
Mayor and council members, I actually have several comments with regard to Amendment 13. I can, I can run through them briefly. First, if you'd like, or I'd be happy to just field questions from the council. So with regard to my comments, I've got a couple, and some of these comments are simply comments, not necessarily intended to be positive or negative. With regard to the term, I would note that ultimately this amendment calls for or contemplates up to 25 years of automatic renewals, and I always would caution a city to be careful about automatic renewals and at a minimum make sure that we calendar the cancellation period so we can keep an eye on how the, the performance is going under the contract. My second comment dealt with the rent, and obviously this is a reduction, I believe, and Mr. Paulson can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the current rent that we're receiving is around $1,300 per month, and they contemplate dropping it down to $1,000. They do include what we call elevator clauses that would, that would raise the rent, but you wouldn't get your first raise until August 1st, 2027. So this really puts that out of ways. My, the big issues that I have start in paragraph number four, where basically the, there's a paragraph number four in the amended, the third amendment is what's called expansion of permitted uses, and as it's written here, it would give AT&amp;T essentially sole discretion to expand their use however they see fit. And I think there's some language that we could insert. At a minimum, I would propose inserting some language about halfway down, if the council is kind of following along, it says, it's talking about expanding their use, their uses including, but not limited to emergency 911 communications or any other, or for any other reason. I think at that point, we could include some language that indicates something to the effect, at a minimum, provided however, no such expansion of use shall be permitted unless the lessor, the city provides advanced written permission, and then we could qualify that by saying such permission wouldn't be unreasonably withheld, and then also indicating that if it's, if it's a change or expansion that's required to comply with some updated regulation, rule, or statute, that the city would grant that permission automatically. But I think we need to include something so that we can control, or at least have some input in how our property is being used. And as the mayor indicated, I think we wanna make sure that they're not putting six or seven additional antennas, installing ground facilities and the like, because we do have, as I understand it, some additional users up there that would definitely or definitely could be affected. The next major comment that I have is contained within paragraph five, removal or restoration. In paragraph four, they basically indicate that they can expand their use however they deem appropriate. Paragraph number five basically says, and when it's time for them to go, they've got no responsibility to replace any trees or shrubs, or more importantly, if they do install any structures there, they can basically just throw their hands up, walk away, and it would become the city's burden to clean that up, to make adjustments. The big, the primary concern I have The big, the primary concern I have here is a lot of times when you get these types of facilities that are put in place, there's always a risk that some of the components, some of the equipment that they'll bring on site may have substances that would have to be abated in a certain way or could cost some money for the city to, uh, remove. And so those are my primary comments as it relates to this amendment number three. And I'd be happy to field any additional questions that the council may have.
Okay, can somebody tell me what was the first year of this contract? That's the first contract, there's no, this will be the second?
I believe that.
Amendment to a, a first contract?
The, the first agreement may date back, uh, as far as 2007.
I would just say as far as my belief in the city, it benefits the city to have AT&amp;T up there to get, uh, some revenue from, uh, the rent of that space on top of the water tank. It suits their purpose, it suits state's purpose for revenues. If we didn't have that revenue, we have to find another way to fill that gap. Or, or eliminate some services. So, uh, I understand the economics for them. Uh, I think it was 1,300, no, one, 13 or 15, I think it was 13, I, I.
It's currently 1,300.
1,300, going to, uh, $1,000. But yet keeping them here is beneficial to the city, that part. Amendment three, like the city attorney, I have concerns exactly what you said. We need to make sure to, it's a win-win situation for AT&amp;T and the city. Again, I'd like to keep them here, hopefully they'll agree to some of the. Well, that was their proposal of changing the prior first contract before the contract's over in 2022. And they're asking us to amend two things, the language addition, adding this amendment in there and, uh, going to a thousand. I'm okay with a thousand. At least we're not losing, uh, $1,300 a month totally. Like to help in whichever way we can, but we cannot make it worse of a contract for the city of Gilbert. So we need to work on those concerns, and if council has any other concerns, bring them forward for our city attorney. But we're gonna get to Consul Skencic pretty soon here, but are we under a time window to get back to them on a final version?
Uh, my recollection is there, there was not a hard date, they wanted it sooner rather than later, but I don't recall a hard date with their request.
Ninety days in there somewhere, but we're past that already. But we're working on it, I think, uh, nothing, we have not ignored their offer or request to us, so I think legally, we're still okay with it, and I think we're not, we haven't taken, done nothing with it. But so what? We're not ready yet. And so those two areas I need, we need addressed, I'd like to have it addressed. Consul Skencic, you have something?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Uh. The statement they say in this, they're referring to, uh. What does it say? They reference subleasing. So does that mean if they're renting, they can have other companies come up there on their space? I mean, shouldn't that come through us for rental rather than AT&amp;T making money off our water tower?
Yeah, very good point, yeah, the whole amendment's got. If we could, I would not adopt, adopt amendment three and just go to leave everything as is and go down to the $1,000 a month. Uh, that's a simple version of my, my version of this contract. There's nothing in amendment three that benefits the city. It could be even worse, jeopardizes some things. And I think we should forget about amendment three, maybe. And just okay, leave all the contract as is and just modify the monthly rent. Anybody else on council? Joel, Consul Pulis? You still there?
Yep, I'm here.
What do you think?
Uh, I don't know, it, it, there's a lot in here that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I would like to table this to look at it further.
Well, like I said, I would, if, I don't know, counselor, uh, lawyer, city attorney. What do you think about my recommendations to forego amendment three and just go with the change from 1,300 to 1,000?
We can, uh, we can bring back to, to the folks at AT&amp;T any, any counterproposal that we would have. Um, and I can tell you my experience in, in working with AT&amp;T, they are fairly good to work with, uh, as far as, um, at least being open to different ideas and different directions. And I think that they'll look for a win-win as well.
And again, with all that said, it still goes to 2027. I can, that has to be changed too, from 22 to 2020, start with the reduction in the rent now, continue on to 2027. And revisit it. What's the Consul Robich, you have anything?
Um, well, it all depends on their willingness. If they're willing to strike, uh, item number four, um, that still doesn't address quite a few of the points that, um, council has brought forward in relation to timelines and, um, with relation to removal of previously installed equipment. If, if AT&amp;T is not willing to proceed with the full removal, redaction of, uh, expansion of permitted use, then in addition to everything that's already been addressed with the subleasing and the attorney's points on unlimited expansion, I'd also like to see some language that, uh, has some mandatory notification to the city upon expansion. So we can at least let public works know, hey, there's gonna be people up there doing stuff. And, um, you know, I think it's imperative that the city be aware of who's working on city property while they're there. So I guess just removing point four, to me, doesn't clear up the issues with the contract.
Doesn't the third amendment address all these points, uh, one, two, three, four, five and six? Seven? Or how many? We can take one each at a, a single.
Um, as it stands right now, the, uh, document that they have proposed to us, uh, seeks to change, uh, each of those, uh, eight or nine items that are contained within the original agreement.
Okay, this one, everybody okay with, uh, our city attorney coming back to us at another meeting? See what advances you can make to better the city's position here? And then we take, keep in mind, we are hopefully gonna need to do some work on this tower. And who is, uh, gonna move that around or does it have to come off? Put where? What's the alternative there? I think John and Sam or Kale? K and L, uh, M, K and L, M, uh. Need to get back to us on how that's gonna come about. You know? But please, relay city councils' wishes to obtain a win-win situation for both parties. You know?
What I could do, mayor, uh, if, if it's the council's wish, I could work with Administrator Paulson to reach out to AT&amp;T, let them know that we've been working uh, on this, uh, request for the third amendment and, uh, just kind of see, see where they are as far as, uh, whether they'd be willing to move on some of these terms and, and what we can do to advance the concerns that the, that we've expressed during this conversation.
This is good to me, but before you, I'm okay to let, let the two work together with AT&amp;T. But I'd also like to have the council, give them this bit of information, is everybody okay if going 1,300 down to 1,000? Is that? Is everybody okay with that? Consul Robich, Consul Pulis?
Yeah, but we have to get the language and stuff straightened out on it first.
Yes, we're, get the language straightened out, but at least, uh, our clerk and a city attorney can say that the council's agreeable, will be agreeable with the thousand dollar thing, and we just work on that other part.
Yes.
Consul Robich?
Uh, potentially, but it would, um, to some extent depend on the term. If we're giving them that rate, uh, for a 10-year lock, um, then I would have to revisit that decision.
Consul Skencic?
Yeah, I guess I'd be all right with it. Uh. We just have to make some pretty good amendments in this contract.
In the language area, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, Consul Yoni.
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, we heard the polling, and everybody's okay with Jim, uh, our clerk and administrator? And Consul Lindsay to continue? Very good. Joel, you're okay?
Yes.
Stantec invoice. Approval of Stantec invoice for wastewater treatment plant project, uh, for professional services rendered by Stantec. Engineering firm down there at the wastewater treatment plant for the period ending February 28th, 2020 in amount of $19,663.30. Council requested to approve the Stantec invoice and authorize the middle to the F, PFA for reimbursement. What's the wishes of the council? What's the city engineer, everything's, what's your recommendations, John?
It's starting to slow down a little bit.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I talked to Ron and I was gonna bring this up uh, with Jim and talk to him about, you know, they don't know how long Todd's gonna be the inspector for the rest of the project. He, Ron Lefon was asking me about, you know, us providing an inspector again, but I think we should talk about that, look at what's left of the budget and see where we're at with the overall project there.
Do you recommend, council, go ahead, pay this, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, the, the current invoice, yeah, that should be, that should be paid.
All right, thank you. I recommend also they did the work. Consul Skencic?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Consul Skencic to approve this Stantec invoice of $19,663.30 for payment.
Support.
Support by Consul Robich? Any more discussion? Call, call, Mayor Overstar, yes. Consul Robich?
Aye.
Consul Pulis?
Aye.
Consul Yoni?
Aye.
Consul Skencic?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, all, everybody voting yes. Aye, affirmative. All right, fee schedule addition. Uh, city clerk, Jim, our administrator?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, as, as our last, uh, council meeting, we were discussing, uh, the different items that could, quarter couldn't be included with the bond, uh, potential. And as that discussion led us to breaking out the water treatment plant capital project that was approved last June. And that's, I believe, 164,000 is the total on that that we approved back then, but we never, we never decided how to pay for that if it was gonna be anything additional. So as we looked at the numbers last week, or last, uh, last council meeting, I was asked to bring some numbers back to the council, so for that $164,000 capital improvement project we have going on, if we want to carry that out for 20 years, you know, 95 cents a month. Carried out for 10 years is, the point was made, how long will that building be there? Then obviously the math doubles as you cut the term in half, so that'd be a dollar 90 a month. And that would be, like I said, going to recouping the cost of the current project. And, you know, we don't know what the future holds for future capital projects out there. So this is one small piece of that, of that puzzle. So it's for, uh, council's consideration.
Well, just, you're, you're giving us some information, right? That information?
Yep.
Something we have to act on.
Well, if we're gonna add this to the fee schedule, uh, that, that would be the, that would be the action. If council wants to add this to the fee. Or do we, you know, continue to take this out of the, out of the existing?
Well, you're, you're just talking about the water improvement.
Just the water improvement project.
164,000?
Yeah, I think it's 164,000, that water, uh, treatment plant capital improvement project that we did last year. We, we started it last year, we approved it last year, we're in the middle of it.
I thought we agreed at the last meeting to take it out of the water fund, which has, I think, 200 something thousand in there? The last figure I remember. And we're gonna take it out of there, but replenish it with, with this fee.
Would be replenishing it with this fee, yes. We're, we're about halfway through that project, we paid for about half of it so far.
Well, you said 10 years.
Right.
Jeez, I, sorry, City of Gilbert, I don't think it's gonna last 10 years. We're gonna have to partner with some help with some communities, we need to, down the road. Well, then again, the council back then might just let her fall to the ground.
And.
It needs a new, we need a new water plant, folks.
Yeah, and that, talking to SEH, who is doing the, who's doing that, this is a long-term project, it's turned into a long-term project. The SEH was doing the, uh, the options for the city of Gilbert as we look forward for a water plant. That study is not yet completed. Um, I did talk to Matt uh, last week or so, and they anticipate having the, uh, flow testing done here or continue starting up again in April, done in May. We hope to have results of that, uh, that water study by June. Uh, you know, then that would obviously give the council some direction on which way we're going in the future. You know, whether we get water from another community, do we build a new plant, that study's still ongoing.
We have OSHA work to be done, 154, we're, we're doing that right now. We have the money and our fund to do it, we need to replenish it. And we should. How long? Again, we, we have engineers saying that building needs replacement soon, five years, I don't think, no more than 10 years old. Can Gilbert do it alone, or can we partner with some people and service water to other communities? And all jointly partnering together to build one plant or either buy water somewhere else? And not build a water plant. This is gonna be on our table right now, what to do, or in five years? But it's gonna come up. And Gilbert can buy water somewhere else, but we have good water. Some say no. I say we do, we got good wells versus taking water from other sources. I say we do, we got good wells versus taking water from other sources. These wells have been good to Gilbert, have given us, given us good water, but our plant is a hundred some years old. We're doing some safety work right now, we're not doing any kind of work that's going to be a long-term beneficial. And if we're going to keep it, we will sink a lot of money into a old facility. You know, that's why it's either. But I'm okay with taking that, this money and paying it out of the, the fund and replenishing it by adding to the fixed rate, a dollar ninety for 10 years, or it would be paid for. Or take it, no, we take that money out of the electric fund, a hundred fifty-four thousand, and we'd be done with it.
That's an option also, Mayor, yes.
Could take it out of the electric fund, and it's a done deal, and we won't have to disturb any fees. I think we have enough money in electric fund and not to jeopardize any other things. Also, we need to, we've been paying money on this thing already. Where's that money been coming out of?
That's correct, Mayor, that's been coming out of the water fund.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, the water fund is, is, this project will be done this year, so, you know, take the hundred sixty, I think there's about a hundred and twenty thousand left this year to pay out of that, that'll drain that fund pretty good, which is why we're just inquiring on, on this fee to replenish that fund.
Simple motion by the council to take on that whole amount out of electric fund and be done with it. What's the council wish to do? Nothing tonight?
I have a question.
Consular Robich?
What is the necessity in replenishing the water fund? If we have the money there, the project is essentially being paid for, why do we need to put that money back in that fund?
Just to prevent it from, it's an enterprise fund, so just to prevent it from dropping down to, you know, near zero.
So we could potentially just continue as we have been paying out of that fund, and at a later date, if need be, we could take from the electric fund to fund something future, since that may happen?
Absolutely, Consular Robich.
Okay, I guess that would be my-
Well, that's an option, but I think the last audit said we lost forty-seven thousand dollars in the water.
We did for the year ending 2018, that is correct.
Forty, if we do that again, because we have not, I don't know why we lost forty-seven thousand, we didn't change any rates, so, and potentially puts us on, this year, losing another forty-seven thousand, unless we fall into problem somewhere, maybe this is the problem, I don't know, it's fixed. But either way, I'm okay with continuing on with depleting the water fund, and if need to be reimbursed, so be it at a later time.
Looking at the preliminary numbers from 2019, I don't believe we'll have a loss in that fund when the audit happens in 19, just so the council's aware.
Even if we took the hundred fifty-four auditor?
I don't think, for 2019, I don't think we'll have an operating loss in that fund, but I, we ended up not doing anything.
Two twenty.
I think we'd be, I think we'd be okay, we'd have a very low enterprise fund balance.
Yeah, that's fine too, breaking even. But then again, if something else came up, there'd be nothing there to help us, then we would have to go and tap the other fund for sure. We had, it's all on paper, though, what can wait? Everybody okay with that? Continue as we go then, then until need be?
Yeah.
All right. HRA audit, they're, that's the Housing Redevelopment Authority up above, they have given the city their audit for formal annual requirement for our review, not, nothing to act on, but we need to, I guess, I like, I'm asking for a formal vote that we've received it, right?
Yes, Mayor, they dropped one copy off in City Hall, and that is here for any council's review.
They want us to make a formal, they, we have received it, and they have delivered for our review, and we need that form, a formal action.
Motion to acknowledge received of the audit.
Moved by Consular Robich to formally say that the city of Gilbert has received the HRA audit for 2019?
I'll second it.
That's 2019 now, right? They don't have a mid-year thing or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, their year rolls like the state, so it's mid-year, so this is for the year ending June 30th, 2019.
Yeah, moving, a second by Consular Leonie, any more discussion anymore? Volcom vote, Consular Robich?
Aye.
Consular Paulus?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye. Consular Leonie?
Aye.
Consular Skansic?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five votes. Any miscellaneous? City administrator?
No, nothing further, Mayor.
Commended staff, anybody that would, need to address? Seeing none, how about motioning to approve the payment of the bills and payroll upon the proper audit of the clerk and the mayor?
So moved.
Moved by Consular Robich, supported by-
I'll support it.
Consular Leonie? Any more discussion? Volcom vote, Consular Paulus?
Aye.
Consular Robich?
Aye.
Consular Skansic?
Aye.
Consular Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye. Motion carries, so, everybody voting unanimously? All right, no other business, somebody want to move to adjourn?
I'll move.
Support.
Moved by Consular Skansic, supported by Consular Robich to adjourn, eight, 10. Consular Skansic?
Aye.
Consular Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye. Consular Paulus?
Aye.
Consular Robich?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, we are now adjourned.